Yeah.
All right, folks, ready to get started? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the planning commission meeting today of May seventh, twenty twenty four. If you would like to address the planning commission this evening during the public comment period or an item that is on the agenda, we request that you fill out a green speaker request card and turn it into staff prior to the agenda item. So screen cards, speaker cards can be found in the back. Uh, this meeting is being recorded and viewing is available via Zoom. The planning commission will receive public comment through email submitted prior to the meeting to staff or in person. Public comments will not be accepted via Zoom. Um, can we get roll call, please?
Chair Durazo.
Here.
Vice Chair Vias Dadi is. Uh, Commissioner Harmon.
Present.
Commissioner Kim.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Madden.
Here.
Commissioner Lessin.
Here.
All right, can we get everybody to stand for the pledge, please? Commissioner Johnson, will you lead us in the pledge?
I'd like to lead.
To the flag. You did a chase through there. She's my mother, where she stands. Why nation? So, we're gonna reach into this.
Item number one. There's two dates that we need to approve. Uh, for a approval minutes from March nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Uh, are there any edits, corrections for the minutes from commissioners?
I'm gonna make your approval. For March nineteenth.
Motion to approve March nineteenth. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion approved and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we're right along the uh, authority, the approval of a meeting notes from April sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Any corrections to the minutes uh, from fellow commissioners? If not, have been entertaining motions approved.
We have here the minute.
Motion approved. Do we have a second? Motion to approve at a second. All those on pick, all those in favor? Aye. Uh, moving right along, item number two, uh, just a reminder, folks, public comment on items that are not on the agenda tonight. So if you'd like to address the planning commission for an item, I think I know where y'all are here, but if there's an item that is not on the agenda tonight, um, you can uh, you can uh, you can address the commission. Um, any members of the public that would like to address the planning commission and again to underscore it on item that is not on tonight's agenda?
Oh, gee.
So, hold your place. And then just a reminder, folks, there'll be a three-minute limit on public comments. Yes, sir.
But I talk, I live in two twenty Madison. My concern is the property behind it is. Just great drainage.
Sorry, you can get to the mic port a little bit, yeah, better.
I'm conscious, sir, I live in two twenty Madison. I've had problems with the school, uh, bring trees down across the drainage ditch. That's they own and put in. And now it's covering all the water onto my property. At the same time, they leave the trees when they drop them, they're just running away. There's no real makings of the other trees are going dying on basically east side of that, so that.
That's it. Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to go to the planning commission for an item that is not on tonight's agenda? And folks standing in the doorway, there's a bunch of chairs here in the front, there's a bunch of chairs, uh, make sense, if you'd like to come in and have us, please do so. You know, there's public comments for items not on tonight's agenda, and I've seen any of them, we'll run along. Um, announcement of conflict of interest, or any of the commissioners, do any of our commissioners uh, have any uh, conflict of interest that they like to share?
Yeah.
Right, not seeing anyone, we're painting, we're gonna move right along before public hearing. Uh. What's hearing, uh, seven A, one at three hundred Piedmont Avenue? Request for a vesting tentative track map, plan use permit, plan unit permit, architectural review permit, tree removal permit, density bonus request to allow construction of a residential subdivision of a hundred and fifty five single-family homes and a parking open space dedication to the city of San Bruno pursuant section eight point two five point zero four, twelve point three eight point zero three oh, twelve point one one six point zero six one. At twelve point, I wanna read them all since I already started. Um, and I don't know what should, four point zero, eight point oh ten, and chapter twelve point two three zero, and ready for city, so.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mike Smith, I think department staff. So the item forty tonight is uh, three hundred Piedmont Avenue, also known as the uh, Crestmore project. So the item seven A on your agenda. Um, the tonight's presentation will have three parts to it. Uh, the first part will be delivered by staff. And then from there, we will hand it off to our E I R consultant, Christie Black, sitting to my right. Um, and then the last part of the presentation uh, will be delivered by the applicant, uh, Summer Hill. Uh, the purpose of tonight's item is to, one, provide a project overview, and that's my portion of the project. Um, provide the information on the E I R process and describe the analysis and conclusions of the draft E I R and the content of the final E I R. Um, and then lastly, provide more detailed project overview. Um, this is a two-part presentation, like I said. Um, it will take, uh, we're requesting that you save your questions until the end of the fine presentation by staff, yeah. So, uh, without further ado, let's start our project overview. Um, the location of the project is again, three hundred uh, Piedmont Avenue, the former, first more high school site. Uh, the San Antonio Union uh, High School District owns the forty acre site. Um, the district has entered into a purchase and sale agreement with Summer Hill Homes to sell the property. The property is accessed from Piedmont Avenue to the south and Cortland Drive to the north. Highway two eighty uh, runs uh, directly east of the site. The San Bruno Chin- Chinese church located at two fifty Cortland Drive, almost across the street from the site. Um, the existing uh, s- single-family homes are what's surround the property pretty much to the north and uh, west and south. And the site has uh, some significant grade to it as it slopes uh, on its west uh, western edge. The current uh, general plan, uh, land use classification for the site is low-density residential. And the current zoning for the site is R one, which is single-family residential. So the proposal uh, by Summer Hill Homes is to instruct a hundred fifty-five um, home subdivision, all two-story, single-family homes. Uh, fifteen, more than fifteen percent of those homes would be below market rate or B M R units, and those would be located on-site. All homes would be two-story, all homes would have two-car garage for each home. And the project subdivision also includes a point two seven acres of privately-owned uh, neighborhood community spaces. And that's uh, going back there, that's uh. The signing approvals required are shown on the screen. Uh, so we're, as you said, requires a plan due to permit, it's just one of the many, those are the rest. Here's some uh, photos of the site. Um. So the property was operated in high school from nineteen sixty-two to nineteen eighty. Since then, the property has been used as a continuation school, alternative high school, and other private uses. From nineteen eighty-seven to twenty twenty-one, the playing fields on the property were open to the public for use and were maintained and managed by the city of San Bruno. The high school campus is currently vacant. But the district currently leases the playing fields on a short-term basis to A Y S O and Lowen Soccer Clubs for youth soccer playing games and practices. So the project includes a dedication of six point nine one acres of land to the city of San Bruno for usage recreational fields. Um, and property, and that includes property west of Portland Drive for recreational supportive uses. These areas are shown in orange uh, on the image on the screen. Uh, the land would be rough graded prior to acceptance uh, by the state. So a little bit about the site approach. Um, in addition to the six um, point nine one acres of land that is dedicated to the city, the project includes an additional twelve point two nine acres of privately-owned forested area, which will be subject to remediation for fire protective purposes, but otherwise preserved as natural forested land made accessible only uh, made accessible to the public. This area would be maintained by the nature of subdivisions H O A. Um, and in total, project uh, was reserved uh, nineteen point two acres of land uh, as open space. Thus, the project is maximizing development of the more level portion of the lot, which is already developed. So that's how the the co- culture clustered. Wow. This city included a master planning process for the re- recreational portion of the site. It is now looking for funding, uh, and again, this is on the land that is to be dedicated to the city of San Bruno. Uh, the city's continued work on this master plan is contingent upon the project before you actually being approved, so the land can be dedicated. Um, development of these deals is actually not part of tonight's project, it is before you. Uh, this is actually undergoing a show center review, um. So also associated with this project, there is a settlement agreement uh, between the city and the district. Uh, it required the city to initiate a general plan amendment to modify provisions contained in the general plan as they relate to the Crestmore site and uh, amount of acres devoted to playing deals on that site. These amendments must be processed concurrently with the project entitlements. Uh, you can find these amendments attached to resolution uh, twenty twenty-four dot zero four, which is attached to the staff report. Uh, the purpose of these amendments is to make sure that the open space totals for the Crestmore site uh, conforms to the settlement agreement between the city and the district. And that is also reflected in the project itself before each time. The settlement agreement also uh, contemplates the amount of land that is to be dedicated to the city and the location of the bio-retention facility that you see uh, in the project. So all that is kind of covered by, in by the settlement agreement between the city and the district. So the project includes a city-initiated uh, uh, zoning amendment as well. And that is simply to make sure that uh, the zoning for the site was currently R one, which is a single-family zoning, uh, is consistent with the general plan land use, which is going to be open space. So, so the zoning will become open space, the land use designation will be involved in space. So this concludes my portion of the uh, presentation, and I'm gonna hand it over to Christine for the uh, E I R.
Thanks, Michael, and greeting Commissioner, I'll be mentioning on the sequel process for the E I R. I'm gonna keep it a little brief, because we've been here before and you've heard about the draft E I R back when it was released. So I'll review what the main purposes of sequel are, though very quickly over what the process is. Talk about the contents of the E I R, focusing more on what is in the final E I R, which is the newer document. Talk about the public review of the draft E I R and then go from there. So first, to fetch you what the main purposes of sequel are within this process. It is providing information to the district makers about the environmental impact of this project. It's also identifying ways to mitigate significant impact of the project. And also, as you can see here, provides an avenue for public participation comment on the project and its environmental impacts. So we're towards the end of the sequel process, we're all the way down to the May seventh planning commission hearing tonight. But there has been a lot of work leading up to this, all the way back to when the planning application was deemed complete in March of last year. That has been with the preparation for the E I R to understand the public and the agency and what they want this go for it to be. A distributed draft E I R for public comment and then drafted respondents to do comment in that night on the E I R. And the final step of this will be later this month when the city council holds a hearing on the E I R and the project. So the E I R is a really comprehensive document, it's on the table in front of me, it covers all of these sixteen or seventeen environmental areas. And it also looks at project alternatives, so we have to look at the no project alternative, what would do, what would happen if the project was denied? And then we have two alternatives carried forward, one has an increased density compared to the proposed project, the other has a reduced density compared to the proposed project. And there were also several uh, alternatives that we evaluated and decided didn't meet the sequel requirements for an alternative. And so the E I R, like I said, looked at a variety of resource areas and in terms of sequel conclusions, quite a number of them did have impacts, but their impacts could be reduced to a level of less than significant with mitigation. And more importantly, there are significant and unavoidable impacts of the project, both in transportation and greenhouse gas emissions. And those are both related to this concept of vehicle miles traveled. And how many vehicle miles traveled would this project generate? And that it's sort of intrinsically linked to greenhouse gas emissions from those vehicle trips. So if you remember last time we were here with the draft E I R, there, there are some constraints with the site that make it not very conducive to public transit or, or site blocking to reduce those vehicle miles traveled, so that's why the impact remains significant and unavoidable. Even though we are requiring a, a transportation demand management plan and, and everything else feasible on the site to reduce these impact. So as I mentioned, the draft E I R was circulated for public review at the end of last year. At that point, the public and also agencies were invited to comment on the draft E I R's content. And there was a hearing that year in October to also have a conclusion occasion and allow members of the public and also the commission to provide comments on the draft to the E I R. And what we do with that then is we have to, uh, according to sequel, respond in writing to each one of those comments on the draft E I R. And that constitutes the final E I R that is was published in April. So like I said, we made responses to each comment, bracketed out all the comments in the letters. We did make some revisions to the draft E I R, both in response to some of those comments. And there were also some staff initiated revisions, which is very common as we're uh, getting the document ready to be finalized. And there also is an errata, it's a few pages long, cleaning up some typos, updating some papers or some things like that, so. That is all in front of you for consideration tonight as well. And I'll go over very quickly some of the comments that we received on the final E I R and what our general responses are in the document. So we received comments on reducing the M T concerns from the public about traffic during construction and operation. There were concerns about slope stability, as Michael said, there is a pretty significant uh, demographic difference between this site and the neighborhood to the west. Also concerns about noise, and then also um, some comments from S F O about airport land use inconsistency. So first, the M T reduction. Uh, we did receive a comment from Caltrans suggesting certain ways to reduce C M T, and we took a hard look at those and found that the strategies already in the E I R are from the appropriate handbook for strategies for reducing the M T. Some of the other suggestive measures that Caltrans had in their comment, like increasing the location efficiency or improving the bicycle network, we ruled out because of the characteristics of the site. Um, the site itself is quite flat, but getting to there is sort of Olympic level cycling, and so that wouldn't really work, same with walking, it's not very close to transit. We did uh, consider increased density already as part of alternative one, so that is a suggestion that Caltrans made that we had already considered. And also pedestrian network improvements are included in the project already, so. A lot of this response was really us going through, making sure we did touch on everything Caltrans suggested, and we found that we did already examine all of those strategies for the M T reduction. Next, there were some concerns about construction traffic, and all of the traffic associated with construction is going to comply with the city's requirements, like making a truck routing plan and also documenting conditions of roadways before construction so that the applicant or the contractor would have to repair any degraded conditions after construction. For operational and build-out traffic, one of the uh, corollaries with the M T under sequel is that sequel no longer looks at level of service and congestion as a metric. Uh, but we did look at traffic control warrants for Madison and Piedmont and three other nearby intersections and found that the quantity of new traffic added to the area would not warrant additional uh, stop signs or upgrading existing stop signs to traffic lights. We did find, however, that from a qualitative perspective, a new stop sign at Madison and Piedmont was warranted because of the restricted view when coming off of Madison Avenue. Next, for slope stability, the applicant has commissioned a geotechnical report in the recommendations that those are going to be implemented. And that includes methods like hydroseeding and hydromulching with deep-rooted vegetation to help hold that soil in place. There is a gorm drainage system to limit the runoff from the site to offsite. And there also is remedial grading that's being done, or that would be done on the site to help with slope stability. Next, there were concerns from the public about construction noise. In the draft E I R, there is mitigation, there are two mitigation measures for construction noise such as temporary noise barrier, muffler, staging equipment far away from homes. And those specific measures will be developed more once the construction phasing is known and when the project is approved. And we've found that that mitigation would reduce impacts to less than significant. Finally, for operational and build-out noise, so the noise generated both by the fields and by the use of the field and by the homes, we found that that noise would not exceed the city's noise standards or just outside of the standards would result in a substantial increase compared to the correct conditions. So noise impacts at construction and operation were all found to be less than significant. Finally, regarding S F O's letter, they have some input about some revisions and I think more nuance to add to the draft E I R about their airport land use consistency plan, and so we added those. They also suggested considering a maximum density alternative or higher density on the site. And for that one, like I mentioned earlier, we already have a maximum density alternative considered as alternative one. Um, and the difference here with S F O wanting maximum density across the entire project site, but we decided it wasn't appropriate to evaluate that because having residential across the whole project site, which means the recreation component goes away, it doesn't meet the objectives of the project. So again, we did make some draft here, we did correcting some type of unintentional omissions, we added that additional detail provided by S F O about their airport land use uh, consistency plan. And Summer Hill also in the interim had provided with some updated tree removal numbers, so we updated those. None of these changes actually changed any of the significant conclusions or determinations or analysis in the draft E I R.
All right, so this ends the first part of the presentation, and now I'll hand it over to the applicants team to do the, the second part.
Good evening, Chair Durazo, planning listeners, my name is Eva Breeze, I'm joined tonight by Summer Hill colleagues as well as our project team. Summer Hill Homes is a privately-owned home builder, developing communities of distinction, draft area, and we've been working in San Bruno for more than twenty years. And the three hundred Piedmont Avenue project is our fourth community here in the city. We appreciate all the hard work from the city of San Bruno staff, support from the high school district, the feedback we've received from neighbors and the San Bruno community at large as our plan for this unique site has evolved over the last two and a half years. I will provide an overview of our planning approach and project plans, and our architect, Joe Williams, K T July Architects, will briefly present, present the home designs. Our project applicant statement, write in additional details. Uh, staff did review the existing conditions on this site, I just wanna add a note that the the roadway that runs through the project site is a public road, excuse me, is a private road uh, with a public access easement, um, and it currently does not meet the city design standards. So first, our planning approach. Our planning approach was to use our twenty years working in San Bruno on our Marisol, Marimont, Skyline Ridge projects our experience there, and to be consistent with the city's general plan zoning and utilize your plan unit permit ordinance to preserve open space, and to be consistent with the surrounding single-family detached neighborhood, provide open space, land for recreation to the San Bruno community, to preserve the natural open space slopes, and to incorporate the neighborhood feedback we received during our community meetings. As staff, uh, as the Stafford uh, report describes, our plan includes two neighborhoods. And we took the feedback we learned from our previous San Bruno projects as we designed the three hundred Piedmont Avenue site plan, including providing sidewalks on both sides of the streets, two-car driveway aprons with two-car garages, parking on one side of the street, preserving open space and providing play space. As described, the project will dedicate six point nine acres of public open space land at no cost to the city. This includes five point three acres intended for playing fields and one point six acres intended for recreational supportive uses. Summer Hill will rough grade the dedicated area and the city will construct any additional improvements. We worked with staff to develop this plan to illustrate the dedicated area along Cortland with head and parking for the fields and a walking path. And the Cortland frontage along the side with the new homes will be unique to San Bruno. Instead of five-foot wide sidewalk typical in the city, we will have a seven-foot wide sidewalk with street trees and tree wells placed thicker, which will enhance its aesthetics and result in traffic calming on the street. Two hundred ninety-two new trees will be planted throughout the community. And what you can see in this plan are the twenty-four below-market rate homes that are spread throughout the community, which I will describe shortly. The summer project benefits are creating one hundred and fifty-five single-family detached homes compatible with the surrounding Crestmore neighborhood, all single, all family-sized, four-bedroom plan. We're preserving fifty percent of the site, that includes public open space and privately-owned, publicly accessible open space. We're providing twenty-four single family homes, all four bedrooms at below market rates to low and moderate income families. And the site currently generates no property taxes. So these homes will generate significant property taxes every year to benefit the entire San Bruno community. And one time uh one point nine million dollars in impact fees to the schools, San Bruno Park School District, San Mateo Dean High School District, as well as four point nine million dollars in development impact fees to the city, aside from the land dedication. Lastly, the proceeds of the sale of this project site of the district are anticipated of much needed housing offsite for district teachers and staff. So this is a view of the enhanced uh enlargement of the the streetscape I described with the wider sidewalks and street trees along the new Cortland Drive. We have also enhanced the front yards facing the future head and parking with a low open rail fence and increased landscaping. This plan also shows how each how each plan relates to one another throughout the project. Each plan has a notch in the rear yard to provide outdoor living space. And the homes are typically staggered to maximize separation and privacy between neighbors. This is a view of the neighborhood top lot, it will include three different play areas, a grass area and other amenities. There are way playgrounds for ages two through five and five through twelve seating and bike amenities. This decorated decorated street light will be located along all streets, all private streets, excuse me. This is a more passive neighborhood community space featuring architectural landscaping and seating. And this uh land plan also shows how the individual lots will be configured along the street with a sidewalk, two car driveway, front yard landscaping and trees. Porches and letting spaces are pulled forward, minimizing the appearances of garages and providing a pedestrian friendly streetscape. A variety of fence designs will provide architectural interest along the streets as well as take advantage of the use from the site. We have been working with the San Bruno Church since twenty twenty-two regarding title issues in order to preserve their access. And Summerhill will be installing new gates, fencing and a sign for the church. During our process, we hooked in two neighborhood meetings inviting more than five hundred residents. And we also met individually with residents of Piedmont, Madison and Keyport. And appreciate the local knowledge they shared. Questions included maintenance of existing slopes, soils, soil stability, stormwater flow and property. Regarding existing slopes, we will implement a vegetation management plan incorporation with the San Bruno fire department throughout the open space, removing dead trees and establishing defensible space buildings, as shown here. In addition, a detailed geolock, a geotechnical report was prepared with Halloween's inclusive recommendations from the project. And regarding stormwater, the new lots have been designed to drain towards the new streets. And the amount of stormwater on the existing slopes draining towards Madison will actually decrease. There is an existing private storm drain line serving the site which connects into Keyport. And we've worked collaboratively with property owners on Keyport, planning for repairs and to ensure that the H O will maintain this line in perpetuity. And as noted already, uh there will be a new stop sign added at uh and ADA ramps added at the intersection of Madison and Piedmont. And this was a topic also raised during our community meeting. Uh this exhibit shows everything that the homeowners association will maintain in yellow in perpetuity. In January twenty twenty-two, we began meeting with representatives of San Bruno AYSO and Low and Tucker Labs to understand their programs and use of the Crestmore Fields. This collaboration has continued as we participated throughout the city's Crestmore Fields master plan process and modified our stormwater treatment line to maximize playing field space without impacting environmental protection. I will now turn over to Jill to provide a brief overview of our architecture.
Great, good evening, Jill Williams, that's what we teach you why. Real pleasure to be here, Elaine's covered so many important topics about how how this home how the whole design really came to be. We really look at this balancing of lot size, home size, uh private open space, common open space to really create a brand new neighborhood. And so those were all the kind of the important objectives that we had. Um and so one of um um so we created a couple of breadcrumbs, these are true to the site plan and represented different neighborhoods and so we're looking to stitch these two neighborhoods together, right? So there's no true separation between the two kind of defined by the two lot sizes. Really, but they're very open to each other and just really flow into each other. This happens to be a view of neighborhood one, a little bit more contemporary architecture. Um transitioning as you get into neighborhood two with a little touch of maybe a little historical detailing. Um but really try to create a very rich palette of materials. We have our color boards here. I'm happy to talk about anything um as you have any questions. Um but really provide that richness and detailing, create that a bit of a common thread, but also trying to balance that with individuality and variety for the homeowners. And so sorry. Well, um as all the drawings are in the package and you have those and you'll see that um on the neighborhood one, uh like we mentioned, a little bit more contemporary. Um you see a little bit of a canted roof, kind of some of the garage doors have a little bit more of a contemporary feel to them. And um so there like one B, the canted roof, some accidental signings. Getting into the A elevations, how they solder and pitch roofs that we think are a really nice contribution to the street scene. Um and then getting into where we have some different veneers like on the three Cs, so getting into some texture. Um even if we kind of blend the colors, we love the texture that that brings to it. We're cooperating um and like I mentioned, neighborhoods here then starts to get into where it introduces some S tile roofs. Um and so just a really nice moving blending of color and material, right? Everything will be pre-plotted, so we'll know exactly which home and which color scheme goes on every lot. So we do control that um so that we can get the right mix, the right quality um in any sort of the street setting. And so with that, um I think that I'll wrap that up and give it back to you Elaine and um let you save even get back to it.
So yeah, I thought we're, I just I just wanted to think of what kind of just to show the the view from neighborhood two. So this is the the top lot in the foreground and the neighborhood two um homes in the background. Uh as Jill said, these are the more traditional transitional transitional homes. Um and the ninety-two, this be a little plus here, um ninety-two of those homes and they range from about twenty-one hundred to twenty-seven hundred square feet. Let's see a mix of, we start to introduce Ford and Baton, uh S tile roof and a little bit more traditional vernacular uh through the process. Um this is the one of the V I R plans, plan one in neighborhood one is a is the low market rate plan and this is uh the low market rate plan in neighborhood two, this is uh twenty-one hundred square feet and I'll talk a little bit more about that uh shortly. If our project is sustainable, um it's going to be all electric, we have uh energy efficiency, water is uh ground tolerant, native landscaping, water conserving irrigation. Um each garage will be a level two ready for E B charging, level one uh ready ready charging and we'll have bicycle parking. Again, all electric project, neutral or panel. Um as I C F explained, the project has a significant unwieldy impact regarding V M T. Um despite that this site is in the heart of a dense employment area and near amenities. Um as a mitigation, the project will develop a robust T D M plan, transportation abandonment plan that aims to reduce V M T through regular marketing, education and resident programs as well as amenities. Lastly, uh as I mentioned, we have an affordable housing plan that includes twenty-four single family homes on site. There will be twelve per neighborhood and they range from nine hundred and forty to twenty-one hundred and fifty square feet. They're all four bedrooms with two and a half or three bathrooms. Eight of them will be sold to low income households, which is defined as eighty percent of the San Mateo County median income. And sixteen will be sold to moderate income houses, defined as one hundred and twenty percent of San Mateo County's median income. These will be deed restricted for fifty-five years and the homes are dispersed throughout the community. And we will provide and be providing local preference to households that live or work in San Bruno to the extent permitted by law. And we're very excited of ha- uh having this this opportunity to do this in San Bruno on site in the project in addition to what the district plans to do um for their uh community as well. So in conclusion, we accept the conditions of approval in the staff report. And we respectfully request the condition recommend approval of our project to the city council tonight. We appreciate the collaboration between the city, the district, the neighborhood and the broader San Bruno community to bring this unique project to life and available available for any questions. Thank you.
So now we're going to wrap this stuff uh for the staff representation. So um council is the final decision-making body for this project because it does involve uh general plan amendments and zoning amendments, uh so that kicks the project up to council. Um we do have staff recommendation though, so the commission will be making recommendations to council. And so staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt the resolutions that are attached to the staff report. This is twenty twenty-four dash oh three through oh five. Um and these would certify E I R, uh adopt findings, uh secret findings in a statement of overriding consideration and a mitigation minor payment reporting program. That's what the uh resolution out three. Oh four would approve the general plan and zoning uh zoning half amendments. And uh resolution oh five would approve the project entitlements, which is that's the intent of the map. Cause the land unit permit, architecture review, or maybe the rest of it. Um for each of these though, staff is asking, uh is requesting that you authorize staff to make minor amendments as may be needed for legal reasons prior to council review. Um this would be added to all the resolutions, uh and that's just to make sure that we have that we're able to address anything that could arise between now and then. Uh secondly, we have created a revised exhibit for resolution oh four, which is the general plan amendment. Uh to more clearly include the narrow strips proposed for dedication on the west, sorry, yes, excuse me, east side of Cortland Avenue. So you see the little then little narrow strip there that was um not included in the previous one, but it was always part of the property that is to be dedicated to the city, so we are including that. Again, we're just going to rezone that to open space and also do a land use amendment uh to open space as well. Uh so this concludes my presentation and the collective team is available for any questions or or comments here after we're done. Thank you. Any questions, any clarifying questions? Any questions of the presented? This, if you just answer it correctly, is there an example of what a minor event like you like plot in? It sounds fine, but I'm sort of trying to think, what are we authorizing it to? Uh that's a good question. Um so we just want to make sure that we have called the general plan to make sure that we found any inconsistencies that we could arise that could arise, for instance, with the project, but no, uh the project that you see before you would not be changing in any way, shape or form. It's just, it's just for the internal consistency that we're just worried about. To remind folks, so uh if you want to do public, uh we'd like to give a public comment for those who walked in. Look like you can fill out a speaker card in the back. Are we only directing questions to staff right now or do we have our questions for the applicant?
Yeah, sure. I was just observing that in the diagram of the suggested vegetation, I think it was Tristania and Bertha. It's an Australian tree and I think I sort of wondered if you have need of options to to I know, you know, historically, like we we um vegetated our area with a lot of um uh uh eucalyptuses, which have not been that great. Um and I, you know, to the extent that we can focus on using native species for this, that seems like be great because they're kind of adapted, they fit with the ecology.
Good evening, this is I'm on Zeki Ben or Bed Landscape Art Mix. Um yeah, we're gonna be we're gonna be using a mixture of natives and uh and or, you know, naturalized trees and shrubs and ground covers. Um the Tristania is a is it is it evergreen narrow growing tree, it's nice and we don't use it everywhere, but it it provides a nice contrast to some of the other trees that we're using, we're using uh some maples, some oaks um in the park areas, we'll get at larger trees. Uh pistachio, uh madrones. Uh so so we are using a mixture, can't use all natives because they don't always work so well in a in a in a residential development with, you know, small and private yards, things like that, but we have a full mixture of plant material. We also have fire retardant plant material, the mitigation zone, and so we're trying to mix everything and create a variety of you know flowering trees, deciduous trees, you know, evergreen trees and we have a high degree trees along the streetscapes. So that um is it's a nice blend. Any other questions for Lance and Paul up there?
Okay, um yeah, ask questions. Uh Michael, Michael, I did send them ahead of time, did you get them by the way?
Yes, I did. I provided a response, but yes.
Okay, so I I didn't get the response, I'll I'll hit it with that. Um so uh going through the uh the basis of providing, um the first first one is kind of make it be but one of the bases is that general plan policy is to encourage innovative design and site planning and development. Um this this encourage innovative design is interesting. Working in in the vision for the city, what what does that mean? How is that meant?
So I think the intent of the P U P process is to insert as much open space as possible when when doing these developments. So this project um would provide, I think almost half of the land, uh the forty plus acres as open space. And so I think that that's what the framers of this particular ordinance kind of meant when they were talking about encouraging small lot development such as this, but then preserving uh by contrast, certain conserving a certain amount of open space in the process.
Okay, thank you. Um it's also in this basis of design, uh there's, there's a couple of numbers here. It it's saying that density of the development is three point eight five units per acre, which I mean is quite, that's quite low, right? And it's definitely not the density within that developed area. Have done a site study to understand what is that density in that developed area.
Yeah, so the density within the developed area for the houses are, streets are whatnot, is eight point eight one uh units for uh dwellings per acre.
Okay, so in that eight point one, and that does actually exceed what would be allowed in single pe- single family neighborhoods. It, does that create a potential issue in the future as it's open? You know, what what we're trying to do is also make an air type case here, so there's no opportunity for appeal. Does that open us up for drugs?
Uh no, it doesn't. So the the wave density has always been calculated in the city. Um it is based upon the the total area of the site, even if it's being left um undeveloped. So in this case, um if you take the total area of the site, which is forty plus acres, um the real density of the site is still the three point eight six, I believe, is the is the is the true density, the micro, micro.
Does the forty point two also include the plant fields that are going to be dedicated that aren't going to be part of?
It does.
Okay, so does that make sense? I mean, now I see even if you if you keep the rest of the open space, include, you know, so you can just remove that and be under the eight. But it it sounds like the way that we're calculating the density isn't isn't quite right if we're also including a plot of land that's not going to be part of the development in the future.
But well, I guess the way to look at it would be, uh so you're looking at it from an ownership perspective, uh yeah, and you still look at the overall development. It's it's still considered that space that is not not being developed.
But you do not also do you're investing that, then don't you have to split up? But you do not also do your investment, you're doing investing now, then don't you have to split up according to the vesting method? So you're splitting the lot market. Right? Okay, this this is a it's a question, it's legal, um. It it sounds like it's. It's a challenging issue that.
Well, it's it's been used for many developments, so I think the most recent one would be Skyline. And again, I think the planning permit process allows you to just take the overall site area first, and it's what the developer is holding. Um and then they can do dedications for parks, uh preserve open space, hillside areas that are unkillable. And then take all of that density and cluster it. Uh elsewhere on the site, I that provides some even lots. So that was what was done in Skyline. There's there are smaller lots, uh and then there's also a multi-family. Uh structure there that was done is actually a planned development, but uh because of the hillside topography. Um you know, it's it's a. You know, it's a good approach to uh presenting the hillside areas. Other other parts of the peninsula, they build, they go ahead and build all the on these steep lots, but uh this. This process allows you to look at the overall site area and then. Come up with the density and then cluster it.
Okay, so there's that question.
Uh yes, absolutely.
Um. And okay, so within within the site. Uh there's just some language here, it's it's like half of it, right? Fifty percent of the site will be preserved as open space. Including nineteen point one by acres that will be publicly accessible. Uh and that's the status why the P U P requirement, but it's not, it's not literally publicly accessible on the slope like most of its times. So is that? Or or is, I mean.
Yeah, there is a problem that access these over that area. That's a problem where we power our two access points, uh to to actually get to that open space. But um yes, it is, maybe it's not programmed, but there are informal trails, I believe, back in that area.
Okay. Okay, there will be. Will be some network of trails, you will formally. Yeah, and and a, you know, big question I I asked before and I got answered, but. Owns the road within the development site. Is it is it owned and maintained by the city, or is or is that by the H O A? And did it with the utilities?
So the streets internal to the close subdivision, which have the um letter names, so like a street, a B street and so on. Um those will be privately owned and maintained. Um Portland slash Piedmont, um that will become the public road. Uh or public street, and that will be maintained by the city.
And then the utilities, so particularly the sewer and and the water mains within.
Yes, all infrastructure within the private streets will be privately owned and maintained, but all infrastructure within the. Public streets will be private, uh probably.
Okay, I didn't see that. Um it's long documents, maybe I, is that is that clear? In in the drawings, in the documents, and. Is that clear in the package?
Yeah, so the um applicant actually showed a um one. Visual or image of uh your maintenance structure uh for the overall project. Um and also the tentative match shows that the street will be publicly owned.
And it shows also utilities are. Privately used and maintained.
Child Olivia, I think maybe clarify.
I can just clarify that, so the streets that I showed in yellow that were private. That was referring to curb gutter sidewalk, those are all generally made and the street lighting are maintained by the homeowners association. The water and the sewer are city utilities. To be clear, yeah. But that's the way San Bruno works, that they wanna maintain that. The ownership.
Ownership, yeah, okay, and the asphalt, so you said curb gutter sidewalks?
Yeah, curb gutter sidewalk and asphalt, sorry.
And asphalt.
And asphalt and street and streetlight, those are all gonna be maintained by the owners.
Then one. One last question, sorry guys, for for the applicant. So you mentioned that uh there'd be significant property taxes generated, do you have an estimate for the what that might be?
Approximately three million dollars a year.
To uh property taxes, or is that? The proper state or to?
Um well, the San Bruno breaks that down into pie, um the city. School district, the county, um. Both school districts, the community college district, the county. All get a piece of that. And the city at San Bruno.
So three million is the estimated total. Revenue.
And annually, yes, that's correct.
Forty-five, first city goes a sliver, I think.
Well, it's north, you know, it's north of four hundred thousand dollars, um at least.
Okay, thank you.
Um before I open public comment add up, I did have a question for um Summer Hill. Uh can I, I can't help but notice that there's a lot of little heat with uh soccer things on them. So I'm starting out technical question, I have a soccer related question, um. I do appreciate sharing that there's partnership and a dialogue with the folks using the soccer field. Um can you just elaborate on what those conversations have been? And I looked for it in the report, but it was like thirteen hundred pages, so maybe I missed it. While there's construction happening. Is there an alternative or an option for folks to use us a parallel field or with the contingency plan? Uh for for these youngsters while the construction is happening? And apologies if I missed it, but clarity and thought that could be appreciated. Uh I mean, there's city or summer holders.
Mr. Chair. The and I'm I'm Peter Gilly, I'm the community building director. The the question about the. Market improvements, uh when the fields will be completed, what will happen? In the time between when uh when the developer. Takes over the property, starts work on it, uh very little of that is is resolved at this time. Uh we do. As as was noted, there there has been work on a master plan, uh there has been money that council let's put aside uh for additional designing. Uh. But until the project is actually approved. Uh we don't know if a developer is actually going to buy the property, we don't know if the district's gonna sell the property. We don't know how long it's gonna be before uh the final map is recorded. And and the land is graded to to the point where the city actually has the property. Uh all of those are time frames that are highly dependent on on. On private market and private decisions. Uh and while while the city, our 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 community service department has. Uh tried to reach out to other agencies uh to see if they have available uh available. Fields to use, um. At this point, there hasn't been anything worked out, um. We aren't, we as a city are not operating the fields now, uh it's not our land, we're not a part of it. Uh so we're trying to help, but uh at this point. Uh we don't have a s- solution, uh and we don't know what the time grid is, which we understand is what half this room is probably here for. Uh council is going to uh in in future meetings, have discussions about. Uh. The timing of the park, the funding of the park. But at this meeting here, we're we're really just talking about planning and timing. Uh and moving the project as as Mr. Smith mentioned, uh. None of the things could happen until planning commission makes a recommendation on this this piece. So council can take an action on the next piece, so possibly the private entities uh can. Make their cities. Uh I know that's not the answer that is is wanted, I know people want a definite answer, uh but to be honest, it's right now. Uh it's it's still in works.
Huge, you know, right, I appreciate their response, um any other comments we? Commission require open public comment. Provided folks, again, if you would like to make a public comment, there's uh speaker cards in the back. Um. How many comments do we have?
Seven.
Okay, seven, um can we start calling them off, and just a reminder, folks, that you have a three minutes agreement. So.
Our first host speaker is Jeff Dasher.
I'm Jeff Duckhour, I live in one ninety-five Madison. So I was at the last meeting, uh October twenty-sixth, and. Probably gonna say the same thing I did then. I'm not really concerned about what you guys built up there. My sole concern is traffic. And in the draft E R A, I haven't read the. The final E R A, but in the draft E R A, they have site access via two streets, Portland. And Piedmont. In that draft E R A, it said the impact of Portland Drive was less than significant. So I don't know how you can come up with less than significant, cause you're building a hundred fifty-five homes. Two cars per home, that's three hundred cars. And they're going up and down Portland or up and down Piedmont, so. Uh you don't know where you come up with less than significant, to me is a significant traffic impact. If I was living on Portland, I'd have all my neighbors here, because that's a huge impact. And then on the access streets, to get to those two site streets. They name them all, the lost saving, we go out of New Portland, gentlemen, they do not mention at all Madison Avenue. I've lived on that street almost thirty years, I was there when they had the high school up there. Traffic zooms up that street and down that street. You're not gonna tell me that people are gonna go Crestmore Drive, down Piedmont. To get into the site, or come down Madison, turn on Whitman, go up Portland. They're gonna zip up Madison, and they're gonna turn on Piedmont. Now you put in a stop sign up there, it's great. The stop signs be also added at uh Bennington and Madison. And I know you guys don't do traffic here, I think at the last meeting you gave me a name, Harry. Yep. Uh. Address it to him, but I'm just expressing my concerns to you guys. And then as far as. The construction traffic, I know there's gonna be a designated route. There's gonna be a significant amount of dirt loads, it's twenty-four thousand yards, so depending on the size of the truck. It's uh either fifteen hundred or twenty-five hundred truck loads, so I don't know when they determine that, it's a during permanent process. Uh is there a public comment on that? There's not much that we can do, but I would just like to know what the route is. And then lastly, as far as noise, I was my my whole career was in construction. To me, noise in construction is progress, it's it's a temporary problem. You're there for two, three years and it's gone. But traffic is not, traffic is a permanent problem. That I think has not been addressed in the E I, so thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tom Chaser.
I already spoke at the beginning.
Our next speaker is Joe Meyer.
Being quite efficient members, uh my name's Joe Meyer, I live on Chestnut Avenue, it's fairly quarter for here. Um I've lived in San Bruno pretty much all my life, I have to go to school up there at Crestmore. Uh so very involved with the U S of soccer program. Some of the concerns that I do have is the density of the project, the number of homes, one hundred fifty-five. And uh commissioner, how you mentioned the the overall density and how they're manipulating the numbers to make it look like it's lower density. When it's really up wrong with eight point six, what's the lot area ratio per house, per ownership of those houses? The whole two thousand square feet to twenty-seven hundred square feet, what's that for lot size? How does that play into the city's general plan? I know when I added on my house, I had to follow the rules. Why does the developer get sidestepped at? You know, uh reduce the number of houses up there, I think we make a great impact to the traffic that's gonna be coming into that neighborhood. Uh positively increase the size of the open space, the field space that's up there. Access to that public area, there's a trail someplace, somewhere that somebody might know about. Uh how is that access, you know, uh who's maintaining that access, uh who maintains that uh? Those areas that's slow, you know, it's the homeowners association, what enforcement is there uh regarding that? There, uh the high school district owns it now, I'm sure they're still liable for that, they should be maintaining it, but they're not. How do you get that done, what's gonna change if the homeowners association has it? Maybe the homeowners association has more better lawyers than what the city does. I think that's what's happened with this settlement agreement that was made, some backroom deal between the high school district and the school. Due to a law, possible lawsuit, is that even a shield to do, uh has anybody looked into that? Because it restricted the number of space that these fields could be developed into, definitely could not go out of it. When does the city get the property, it was determined that it's unknown, how can you move forward in agreement? You don't even know what the timeline is gonna be. They can buy the property, deny access to that city property, it's going to be city property, you're turning it over to them. One year, two years, five years? How many construction projects have we seen not actually run on time, and we don't even have a timetable? How far behind is our recreation center here with the pool? You know, how many construction projects actually finish on the time they say they do? And we don't, they're not even telling us when we would have access, when the city would get access to start building these fields possibly. The other part is the mitigation of the fields, right, of where are these kids gonna go in the meantime? Where are they gonna go, even though they're not currently on city property, they need to go someplace. You know, where 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 is that gonna be for the undetermined amount of time, we're not talking, you know, months, we're talking years. Without that property in the field space, we would designate the soccer program here in San Bruno. We can't run it down the middle city, city park, there's not enough space. Money hurry park, it took three years to get one, it's about change for the whole thing, we went watered down there for three years. Is there's a lot of unanswered questions, so how can you move this forward without some of these questions being answered? The big thing is the timeline. That's the biggest one. How can you move forward without knowing when the city will actually get that property? And where's the funny, they said what, four hundred thousand dollars a year in tax money? What's the cost to build that the soccer facility up there? You know, is that anyone's into, or is that funny? You know, I think the city's probably spent that four hundred thousand, but they think they're gonna get about sixty-five times on sixty per project, that really need to get done. It's gonna be left. How long is it gonna take to get those soccer fields actually developed, if they can develop it? Maintenance on it, who's maintaining them? Out of the four hundred thousand that they get, how much is gonna go for maintenance? Is the parking rack gonna get more money in their budget to maintain the fields? It still takes, I mean, it's drastic and things. I've seen numbers of smaller parks, what I win you that they did. That it costs seventy thousand dollars to maintain that little tiny apartment wind field, you know? This is, it's amazing, how can you move this forward without having solid numbers? You know, timelines is is the biggest thing. Can we actually use?
Senator, your time is, we actually give you a little extra, we're starting to clock late, thank you for coming.
Guys, thank you.
Appreciate you.
Speaker of Mary Franzella.
Really? Uh. It's great to see Summer Hill building a Ford project in San Bruno. City's fortunate to have a developer that can. My time on the city council, we were always able to work with Summer Hill. Was a developer who always followed through with what they said they were gonna do. It's a developer who's staying away from these sites, from the edges of Madison and Keith and. Glenbrook Lane, where there's been a slide problems, it's a developer who's providing soccer space. This is a great project, and a hundred fifty-five homes sounds like a lot of homes, but it's nothing on forty acres of land. And, you know, we heard track the traffic concerns when the Marisol project was built and. My memory's not as great as it used to be, but I believe it's some seventeen homes that were built there. And you can go there today, and there's not a traffic problem. Um. It's an excellent problem. Uh. Proposal, I hope that you support it, you look back to some of the other proposals that the school district was bringing forward. When they first vacated the school, they were proposing a twenty-four hour mail facility. Um. For their higher county mail story. This is an excellent project, it should be approved, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Our next speaker is Terry Chavon.
Good evening, Chair Durazo and members of the planning commission. My name is Terry Chavez and I'm a trustee on the Semitole Union High School District and I'm also a San Bruno resident. I'm here this evening to urge the approval of Summer Hill Homes project application for the hundred fifty-five new homes at the former Crestmore High School site. Let me start by thanking the city of San Bruno staff in advancing this project application to tonight's hearing. The path to tonight's decision has always been smooth. But the district and the city have always worked toward a goal of creating new housing and recreational space on this site. Tonight, the work has paid off in the project that you've been working on. The district is excited about this project for many reasons. One of which the proceeds from the sale of the site to Summer Hill Home are anticipated to fund capital, facility improvements throughout our entire school district, as well as housing for district teachers and staff. These new homes will be filled with families that will bring new students for both the San Bruno Park Elementary School District and Semitole High School Union District. Creating new public recre- recreational space will meet the needs of our broader community. My girls played AYSO soccer here and when they were younger, of course, and that's a, that's a very that's, this is very near and dear to my heart. I know when I'm talking about the soccer goals tonight, that's gonna be addressed in another meeting. Creating new public recreational space will meet the needs of our broader community. Twenty-four of the hundred fifty-five homes will allow moderate and low-income families to put down permanent roots in San Bruno. Additionally, as, as we've seen on the slide, there's impact fees that are gonna be uh, provided to the city of San Bruno. There's impact fees that are gonna be provided to San Bruno Park Elementary School District, and those impact fees will be from the Semitole Union High School District, as well as the annual property tax revenue that will be about four million dollars a year that, that's distributed, um, to see San Bruno. Both three school districts, the Community College School District, the High School District, and the Elementary School District. And then some of it goes to the county as well. So there's a lot of, um, benefits I see in the property, annual property tax as well. Once again, I ask that you recommend approval of this project tonight, so we can bring this project to reality. Thank you for letting me comment. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jack McCann.
It's Jack McCann, I have an environmental science student at Cal Poly Humboldt. I would like to say that I am not looking forward to inheriting this project as a lifelong San Bruno resident. Um, I can say that me and a lot of fellow young people have kind of seen what suburban sprawl has done to our communities and how it's taken away a lot of gathering spaces. And, uh, unfortunately, looking at this, the plan for these hundred fifty-five homes, a lot of that area is actually dedicated to roads, to asphalt, to pavement. Something that has, has really zero, zero purpose, except for just going somewhere else. I would urge you to reconsider approving this and instead look for something that has a lower footprint to house people. I'm not against housing. I wanna house people, but let's preserve open space that we have and make more space for community. And stop giving so much room to cars that, again, perpetuate fossil fuel. And even once you got rid of the gas car, then, you know, EVs are not without sin either. Um. Otherwise, I would also urge you to heavily consider pushing, pushing the native plants. Okay. Uh, native plants, I believe, are in the future. They've been in the past, but I think there are, there, there are thresholds that we can overcome, even when you say, you know, it's, it doesn't work in residential setting. Think we need to push, check out, uh, pocket prairies, like native grasslands. Those are pretty cool. Um, I think I've said my piece. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gabriela.
Hi, good evening. Uh, I'm a mom of a Lowen soccer player. Um, and I really appreciate the, to advocate, that you're advocating for a plan, to have a plan while um, this is in construction. Uh, we really see the benefits, um, just being able to participate in this for our children, to their mental, their emotional health, their physical health. Um, so for us, like as the time is approaching, we are more and more concerned about not having a plan in place. We understand that there are a lot of moving pieces, so final, uh, decisions cannot be made yet, but we would appreciate just kind of being able to hear that there are options in place and not continue to hear that there's not not, nothing planned can be yet. Thank you.
Our next speaker is, uh, Jamaya Westerman.
Hi, Jamaya Westerman, and I'm a soccer dad. Um, and I think echoing kind of what a couple of other people and, uh, Marco on the commission, uh, what, what you said. Kind of about what, what happens in the interim. I, I appreciate the need for housing and, you know, throughout the Bay Area, San Bruno. Uh, the, the housing is needed, but what happens to these kids? From getting all these kids out here on the school line tonight and getting them to sit still through a couple hours of council meeting? Like, that's, that's a big deal, right? And these kids, you know, they're part of a team, they play together, they know each other. If they don't have a place to play for a season or a year or two years, you know what happens? Do you split up those teams? Do they lose their coaches because they've been playing there? I understand that, like, something kind of can't happen until things are approved. But we have samples here of, like, what colors the things are gonna be painted. We know how many trees and what kinds of trees and species of trees. And to that, at the same time, say, we have no idea what the timeline's like, it's hard. Like, didn't really hold up, um, to me, and I, I really appreciate if we can get a little bit more clarity on that and cancel approving the project, because, you know, when, once it's done, once those wheels are moving, it's moving. And it feels like it'd be really easy for things to kind of slip. And all these kids here who just won't play soccer are gonna kind of get the short end of the stick. So, thank you.
Our next speaker is Hugo.
Hi, folks. Evening, um. Kind of, uh, uncomfortable with this public speaking thing, but trying to muster up the courage to uh, talk about a few things that concern me, right? Um, and I know maybe some of this has been addressed in the EIR. Uh, I just wanna kind of reiterate certain points, uh, traffic I know everyone's pretty concerned about. I know me and my family feel unsafe already, uh, as it currently stands because cars are zooming up and down, uh, Madison and whatnot. So I think that maybe not just, maybe this isn't the form for it, but maybe not just stop sign, maybe speed bombs or things like that can help, um, alleviate some of those speeding cars. Uh, secondly, I wanted to bring up was kind of wastewater and runoff concerns. Um. I know the waste, I guess, facility, treatment facility is kind of towards the westward uh, area of the plan, and, um, maybe it needs to be there because it sounds like the sloping and the crating kind of makes that the point that makes sense the most, but I think, uh, because that's where it's downhill to the rest of the homes, right? Uh, below the hill, um, I think uh, want the city to, like, you know, uh, make sure that rest of them are down, downhill or safe, uh, make sure if there's any sort of, uh, overflow runoff concerns, that all the water, sewer mains and all of that can handle that, or what if, uh, sort of like, that, that kind of wastewater retention area? If there's any issues, is there any sort of fallback? And prevent additional flow off? I think, I think some of that's been addressed with maybe like some of the, like, receding along the hill and whatnot. Uh, I just wanna make sure, uh, the planning commission is taking those into consideration and keeping us safe. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Angel Lopez.
Hello, everyone. My name is Angel Lopez. Um, I am, uh, the vice president of the Lowen Soccer Club. Um, we are a community-based soccer club and, um, we are a nonprofit organization. We currently have three hundred sixty-five, uh, players enrolled. And, uh, my question is here for the council and, and, um, everybody. Just, I appreciate that Mr. Marco mentioned, everybody, all the, the, the children here in front of you, they're for only one reason. Where are our players gonna play while, while the construction is being made? Um, I, 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 I'm all for development. I believe, um, you know, we all need to evolve and develop and, uh, see ourselves in this beautiful city. There's no way to go forward if we don't develop our spaces. But this, all these children that you guys saw are the future of, of city. And they need a place to, and they, and they need a place where, where, where they're playing. So this is the reason why we're here. We're asking the city, right now, there's no, uh, funding, no plans. And the city's showing little to no care where these children are gonna play. So that is the reason why we're all congregated here, asking for support from the public, the public council to support too, to say where our children are going to play while the site is being constructed. Question is, the magic, the magic word, on funding for the place. So we've been previous, uh, meeting before, discussing the, the, the planning and development of, of the facilities. And everything was amazing, but it's, it's all in dreams because there is no, no money for funding. And the city is not showing any interest in how this is gonna be funded. And again, where all these, uh, players are gonna be. Um, soccer is the, the number one growing sport in the US. Uh, next, in two years, we're gonna have the World Cup hosted by the US. Um, play, uh, games are gonna be played leave by state. So this is, this is just gonna grow. This, this, this situation is not gonna, it's gonna go down. All players are gonna show, uh, children are gonna show more interest for, for the sport. And, uh, the city of San Bruno, it's not showing any interest or support for, of well. So, um, again, I am a volunteer. I, 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 I serve as a vice president. I do it happily because I like to see all these children develop and grow and learn the sport and learn the rules and real, and learn our, uh, sport. Uh, help build their, their, their dream. But, um, I just, I'm searching for support for, for the public and everyone to, to help out. Uh, where my three hundred sixty-five players are gonna, uh, are gonna be practicing playing while this, uh, project is going. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We finished holiday club, I'm just kidding. For letting us speak tonight, I know this wasn't the time or the place, but I thought I watched my brother practice the last time, I was in Hawaii, so I can get into that meeting. We've been very happy, working with Summer Home, the architect you hired, and things have happened since then. Okay, but the main problem is, where are we gonna practice and where are we gonna play? I've been talking to the mayor, some city council members, uh, meeting people from the elementary school district and also Travis from the December of our, our meeting next week. Because we know we're gonna have to go to Monteverde, but Monteverde is gonna become our main field. I was gonna ask the lane tonight because I've been instructed on my life, I've lived in San Bruno for over thirty-six years. You have to have a general idea of how long it's gonna take, generally speaking, it's not gonna be passed as long, approximately how much time? Actually, she might be able to figure it out, if you're back, she might have a response to that. How long that project's gonna take? And if they do close, that was supposed to close on the last day of January, okay? Are, are they just starting the project immediately? How long are we gonna be there? And I've already talked to the school district, so they've already given, can chance our lease. Okay, so we know the place to play hopefully, cool through, through December, this one shows information to you. But a lot has to happen between now and then, okay? And it's all gonna happen basically during the summer because we have to get Monteverde ready, some of the elementary schools, because there's not enough space. You heard how many players play AYSO soccer? Well, you adult that number, yeah, I mean, San Bruno, Lowen, you doll that number, AYSO. And the school district has been great, and before that, because the city was able to lease that field for a dollar a year. Okay, and they charged us money, so actually they generated some money from that to actually use for other things. And the city graciously let us throw in the swimmers once in a while, and they said, we don't really have enough staff. So they actually let us maintain the facility, right? They removed the grass and we took everything else so they could go work elsewhere, see. And that's what we're gonna try to do with your other fields in San, in San Bruno, hopefully. And we're gonna talk to Wayne, hopefully catch her tonight, of course, she has natural questions. Because I just like to know, told by the school district, that we'll have a new lease and we'll be here till December fifteenth. And then from there, to that point, we don't actually know. So we just wanna know if we have a fall season. But we have, it's called planning, right? And I've talked to Michael Smith this week. I said, this is part of planning, planning for the future, because there's a massive plan for recreational sports that was made many years ago by the mayor that was actually here talking, speaking about it. They spent a lot of money on that. Carl Sandberg used to be one of our soccer fields, and guess what? Carl Sandberg is gone. They built homes there. It's not there anymore. And the only fields that we have left are Parkside, which belongs to the school district. Crestmore, which is, belongs to the school district right now, it's gonna belong to developers, who's gonna title some of it. Property back, what they talk about, acreage, which is required retention or, which is required for what actually has to be there. So they're giving, they're taking property, giving you back, but then I'm telling you that part of that actually has to be used for all the street runoff, right? So we don't get a big footprint. Where are all these kids gonna be able to play? I'm sorry, I have enough time, but I wanna.
This is your last thought, if you have one, right?
Yeah, I'm just trying to keep it really brief, but I just wanna share with you, because I've been really involved with these people for the last few years. And when Kevin Scully was superintendent, he made some concessions. They wanted our support in the, our club. And so what was said was, we use cappuccino, that's great, we use cappuccino. Well, guess what? There's no room at the end because they have two esports going. So cappuccino is really a viable option, right? The only viable option is the elementary school districts, which hopefully through our city government, is they're negotiating with them and talk to them about possibly using those facilities, but Monteverde is gonna be our main part.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Folks, before we close, uh, before we close, another comment, just one final go around. Anyone else like to address planning commission before we switch gears, sir?
Senator, I have a question for you. The last speaker was there, we started getting.
Yes.
Can you please tell me how many soccer teams currently play?
Right now, one has thirty teams, whether, for one game, thirty teams in AYSO, six, six, two, ninety teams that play soccer.
Ninety teams. And how many play all at once?
Well, there's eleven players maximum on the field, okay?
I know, I mean, how many bodies, like, how many teams play all at once?
Well, and doesn't the facility that's up there right now, where, Joe, how many games can we play, or, or several games?
Currently runs seven games simultaneously on the Crestmore site. I know, we refuse to.
Three or four on the new plan.
Okay.
Yeah. You, um. Well, I'll, 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 most equals, well, I'm coming.
To the chair, I just, it occurred to me, I have a question for Rich as well.
Go ahead, please. It goes to the other.
It's a, it's a really quick question. I know that San Bruno soccer has been so strong and has been incredible. I mean, it's, it's a labor of love and dedication. Um, I know that it also brings a lot of players from cities neighboring us. Um, has there been any talk about working with cities where, you know, players are coming from to utilize any of their facilities?
Well, we currently have to rent facilities outside of San Bruno, we have to rent in South San Francisco, South, South San Francisco, in the, the whole community because there is, there's not enough space here. It was raining. We didn't have a turf field, so we're bringing it out to any place we could actually play. And we're actually asking people, but because there's, it's called competitive soccer. And they think they own the field, but they don't own the field, but they have rights to the field first, so. And Skyline College is a great place to go, but it's, so it's a dollar amount. And everybody knows these homes are gonna have to be people that are actually gonna raise probably our per capita dollar amount that people actually make here, but we're not really a high-income community. And so that's why we're, we're one of the few clubs where basically it's all volunteers. We don't have to pay coaches. And we don't have to raise our prices because they're already talking, even our, our public part, right? When we have to get this field back, we know how much we're gonna have to pay, so we have to figure out if those people that we have, we can get the money to support those kids to keep them off the street, and that's another, that's a whole new issue. Get it, yeah, but, but answer your question.
Yeah, no, that's, it's good. My, my husband volunteers as a judge, so we need, like, we know that it's the love, uh, and a lot of time at work. Um, then, there's another question that occurs to me, and this it's not really related to. It's not really related to. Or whatever, but um would any other local like AYSO, CYSO, other organizations absorb some of the San Bruno players and kind of adopt them while there's transition?
Well, what happens is, there's that's not allowed, that's called coaching, so now I should get that to go somewhere else. We're gonna have to find the facilities, and we're just, we just wanna hear tonight to let them know that you, it's not really your purview. But you can talk to the other people that are on the boards, the, you know, partner rest commission and the city council and just say, hey, the hell of people here tonight, I think they're concerned. So maybe when it falls on your part that you're responsible for, let's figure out how we get a place for these kids to play somewhere. You know, and that's what we're trying to do. If you want to, if the kids aren't playing. Then what are they gonna do? They're gonna go home and sit and play video games again, watch TV, and that's the last thing they want their children to do. It's called recreation. That's what I think, that's why it's what Mr. Smith. And I talked to him, said, I think recreation is a part of planning. Right? So that's why they're willing to give back that part of it, because they understand that also. They're building re- little recreational parks there because that's part of a community is to have recreational facilities, and she's done a great job. I I support their project. Right? But it just needs, just needs to be tweaked a little bit. You know, because we're not gonna stop the project. I know that. Okay, that's a given. That's for you guys to decide, but okay? But but we're not gonna stop what's gonna, that's progress, right? But we just wanna have something later on, because my kids played here. Okay, my son's thirty eight, so thirty two years ago, he was playing personally. Right? I've been up there. Maybe the seller would sell it twenty years ago. It's been a long time. When we built a development across the street from Tampa, they were supposed to build a multi, it was a league. Multi-use field when you built all those apartments there. And guess what? The economy tank, you can go back and check your records. So I've been here a long time. And that never got built. Right? So we just don't wanna have something happen again. You know, Crestport is not gonna be big enough even what they're giving us back, which is great. So Monteverde is gonna be our main field. And I've talked to the people already, there isn't enough money to even build, to even get it up to snuff Monteverde right now. So we're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna do all this. Through volunteers to help do it. You know, we have the, we have the light, the manpower, but we don't have the money. And the city doesn't have any money. We know we're strapped, we're budgeted. And like I said, four hundred thousand dollars, that project that they that they drove, it's supposed to be twelve million dollars. And when I found out there's no funding, well, why did you pay somebody to build this nice, great plan? If we can't even build it, it's like, oh, that's a great dream, but it's not actually gonna happen. Right? So we gotta see what's realistic. Right? And maybe a developer can kick a little by our way to give us a little caution to really harden.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I um I just wanted to clarify a couple of questions or respond a couple of questions that came up um that are project related. So if you look in the plan set, there was a conversation about the plan unit permit calculation methodology. And on sheet A zero zero dot five.
Elaine, let let me interrupt you real quick. Just question for city staff. Can I? Close public comment and allow the summer, we just did that procedurally, so that we can close public comment and allow her to respond.
Okay, broken, it's legal.
Yeah. Should we just do that? Yeah. Okay, let me go and close public comment. You get a motion to close public comment?
I'm sorry, yeah, you should leave it open.
Leave it open, all. We said the motion, Elaine, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, so yeah, I just wanted to provide clarification on the plan unit permit calculation methodology. So if you look on sheet A zero zero zero, A zero zero five, there's a table called plan unit permit open space calculation. And that's the math that um I think of the who was mentioned. So with the Merrimack project, or we're on my San Bruno site, we use the same ordinance. And I wanna make clear that we did not use the dedicated soccer fields in this calculation methodology. What you do is you add all of the, uh we call it PUP open space. If you look at the plan, we actually label PUP open space. And you add the residential lots. Those need to add up to a minimum of the average lot size that otherwise would provide it. Well, in this case, we exceeded like five multiple. The area that would have been required is eighteen point five acres and we're providing twenty six point nine five acres. So I just wanna make sure it's it's a unique ordinance that you have here. I think it's perfect, but I wanna make sure it's clear we're not doing anything unique. This is straight out of the code and there's a table and there's plans to um to to uh understand the math behind that. Um and then I guess uh another clarification is on the um. The stormwater, we have a uh stormwater treatment area on the site. That is not a sewer treatment area, just to be clear. Our sewer will be completely underground. It's piped through divided streets and connects into the um the city's veins um out out on Portland. So I wanna make sure there's no sewer there uh going on. Um. The uh the first gentleman that spoke during the public comment, I just wanna clarify, we learned, it's been great. We met with people in our backyards of Madison Avenue. There is a concrete culvert uh in everybody's backyard. It's actually on their property. It's not on the district's property. We learned that working with the neighbors and kind of research and so forth. Um there's a public utility easement that that structure is owned um is in the right background, but it's a city of San Bruno utility easement and structure. So that is.
Folks, folks, let let her speak. I don't want to see them all too back and forth, so let's let's Elaine finish, and then I wanna close public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um so there there's there's one that wraps the entire lots um. That that we noted is on the uh is offsite uh if that makes sense. And then with regard to the traffic and the um the construction route, um we will plan to have a neighborhood meeting before we start construction. Um so we we did this at Skyline, we did it at Merrimack, we did it at Marisol. Uh we'll send out a letter that same mailing radius that got the invitation to our community meetings. And we'll have a meeting to let them know we're starting construction and give them information such as truck routes, schedules, timing, things like that. So um just wanted to make sure we're we're aware of that process happening. Um and then just there were a lot of numbers being thrown around, just to be clear. Um I somebody asked about property taxes, so it's approximately three million dollars in property taxes per year for the site. And then we are paying a one-time development impact fee of four point nine million dollars to the city of San Bruno. It's a discrete one-time fee that gets paid. Um it has various buckets, community services, and transportation. There's thirty five categories that that goes to. Um and that gets paid as part of the project, uh in addition to the school impact fee. So I just wanted to be clarified some of that information you planned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So can I get a motion to close public? Motion for a second. Wait a second.
Chair Gerardo?
Hi.
Commissioner.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson.
Hi.
Commissioner Madden.
Hi.
Commissioner Lethen.
Hi.
Commissioner Paxton.
Right, thank you. Uh bring us back to the information for discussion. If there's any questions and potential action. All is open, folks.
Richard. Yeah, um so I I know a lot of you are passionate about soccer. Um I was a AYSO coach in San Bruno for many years. All three of my daughters played. We had a great time, great experience. I actually had all my practices at Monteverde because we were all there. It was great. Um and I'm glad to hear that that field can be used moving forward to help offset some of this. I would say, you know, given that, you know, or the community college district is gonna be getting some of this annual tax. Uh benefit from this project that, you know, the city should leverage that to lease, let these uh folks use their style like fields at a maybe a much reduced rate than normal in the interim. And maybe more long term. And definitely, you know, there's fields in the way in the back of San Bruno Park in that little. Area behind the uh upper softball fields where the little ones could play, maybe have two or three fields up there. We need to really, I think, encourage the city to do all they can to help extend out until the new fields get built. Um also mentioned in previous meetings, I built a new field. I know it's not the part of this right now, but. It needs to be set up with proper restaurants this time. And he said, I can put all the lighting is something that can be allowed and happen here so they can play maybe later into the evening, given that they have. Losing about sixty percent of their fields. Um but I hope this is uh something where the whole community can come together and especially the city to help these folks find alternatives, especially during construction.
Thank you, question. And other comments or questions?
Yeah.
Uh people with uh Commissioner Johnson.
Don't want to labor this soccer situation, however, it didn't um get noted uh in words that there is projected six soccer field uh. Six soccer fields or two baseball and little league or or five suckers. So I think there was some thoughts that there wasn't gonna be any, but in the in the presentation that we see. It indicated that there were six soccer fields or baseball and five soccer fields. That may not be enough. There's a lot of logistics to go with that, but they are projected.
Thank you, question.
Thank you. Right, uh thank you. So, yeah, soccer, um. So it's great. There it appears that there is enough space. Uh it's owned by the school district and other places. Is there anything that we can do? And might have to again ask the public or ask staff, is there anything that we can do here today? Um either write into this resolution. To help it along, to to guarantee. That uh some approval doesn't happen or the handoff doesn't happen. Until uh the soccer teams. Are promised that they can have the lease for a certain amount of period of time or something like that. What can we do?
Uh with all due respect, uh I think you should not be thinking like that because that has nothing to do with general plan or zoning or subdivision laws. Your role is to view whether this project. Uh which staff has determined provides with state law uh or general plan uh after the settlement agreement and zoning and subdivision laws. What recommendation you would make on that development project moving forward? Uh as a member of the public, if you wish to speak at the council meeting and say. Uh council, find a way to to help soccer clubs. That's absolutely fine. Uh but I would strongly recommend against trying to use your land use authority to try to dictate. What a property owner is going to do as part of a lawsuit.
Okay, that's a that's a great response. Uh so for example, like a condition of approval, we're not doing that here today. But like to sort of a uh, yeah, land something happen. Permits can't go through or project can't go through until there's some kind of lease agreement signed or something like that. That's. That's not an option for us.
That's not right.
Great.
That's not a legal option for us, that girl. I'm hold up in court.
Thank you. That's great. Um. Uh separately though, so it doesn't seem like there's very much discussion within the EIR about the loss of the the soccer fields, either temporarily, permanently. Can you explain that a little more?
Yeah, that comes from the focus that CEQA has in terms of recreation. CEQA is really focused on physical impact to the environment. So within recreation, that would include degradation of existing facilities because of increased use. Or it would include the environmental impacts from construction, constructing a recreational facility. And so we did evaluate the temporary impacts of about a year of uh people playing elsewhere. And we determined that that impact would be less than significant, I think, for a number of reasons. We don't know exactly where people will go. There are a number of fields nearby. A lot of them are turf. They're more resilient. And so we didn't find a physical impact. CEQA doesn't require looking at some of the things that are gonna talk about today, like. Where will kids play, things like that. It's just outside the bounds of the plan.
Wait, I'm. Commissioner.
Yeah, well, there, I don't know. I'm not sure it ends up mattering on the EIR, uh when we were discussing um. The suitability of bikes as a strategy to reduce BMT on this property. Um I don't know whether the the sort of standard techniques for estimating that these days have accounted for the advances in e-bikes, which really make. You know, like going uphill a lot more viable than it used to be. Um and so I don't know whether it's something like encouraging. And like an e-bike rental dock or something at the entrance to the site, like, you know, through the estimate, it's actually. I mean, I I know I over flats can do grocery runs on my bike with it. It's a lane grocery room with saddlebags and. Yeah, with with the e-bikes, now you actually get away with that um to a pretty significant degree.
So we do consider biking, and I think the applicant showed in their TMV side that there will be bike parking and that sort of thing, but in terms of putting a number to that reduction. Don't think we're at that yet, and and we're also, I think, the BMT of the proposed project. It's just a slight increase, but it's less than one, and the significant threshold is a fifteen percent reduction. And so they are going to be doing bike infrastructure, but it's still not going to get us to a less than fifty.
Yeah. So couple of comments, folks, uh. Hey, you know, you heard from a legal perspective, from a, I guess, land use perspective, we really can. Considering, you know, she is our legal perspective and a land use perspective to negotiate the soccer field issue. Uh it definitely speaks to me. Uh a couple of things. I think there's other options as Commissioner Madden has addressed with. We polished and it sounds like y'all have been very resourceful. Getting like, I spent two years running after school programs, working with kids, doing black football, doing soccer. I completely get the volunteer aspect. I get folks going very, uh the great changing lives with very little resources and options. Uh y'all almost had to be going, but I'm told from a legal perspective, we tend in that direction. Um I also think that this project has many, many attractive features for the city of San Bruno. Housing, these are gonna go to the city, the opportunities for us to provide housing uh with my colleague here, Justin Chavez, her teachers. Um the low income housing, there's many, many attractive things to this. And also speaking down the road, the opportunity without regard to timeline and things that we can't commit to and promise now. Um the opportunity to create fields and recreational activities for folks who need them. Um I just think that's where we are right now. Um but I I'm inclined to support it, and I think it's a good good project.
There are no other comments or questions, then having a motion.
We can't, we can't entertain comments or questions right now. That was a public comment, I'm sorry. I just really quickly at the at the beginning, we have the the comment, the challenge from two twenty Madison, but I did sort of sidebar. Uh to ask myself, but it sounds like that's the appropriate way that's gonna be directed, is to code enforcement to investigate the issue with the the. The treaties being left. I just wanna make sure you knew that, like, that is going to get directed to staff to actually deal with your problem. Right. A higher level, I always go through. Correct. Or I have the. Point, I don't know. But yeah. I don't think any of that, so there will be this, the the city, the city staff will will be looking into it. Mosquito.
Chair. There are no other comments. I'd like to make a motion for a finding sheet to adopt resolution. Twenty twenty four, yes, you show three recommending that council certify the EIR and adopt funding and if state or overriding considerations. Mitigation on training and employment programs.
Second. Welcome in second.
Um Chair Gerardo?
Yes.
Commissioner Harmon?
Hi.
Commissioner Kuhn?
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson?
Hi.
Commissioner Madden?
Hi.
Commissioner Lethen?
Hi.
Commissioner Paxton.
The second adoption is um. Adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash zero four, recommending that council approve general time zoning now. And. Oh, I have to have to quit the, and the third one.
Chair Gerardo?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harmon?
Hi.
Commissioner Kuhn?
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson?
Hi.
Commissioner Madden? Commissioner Lethen?
Hi.
Commissioner Paxton?
This one's actually, uh next one. To adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash zero prime, recommending that the council approve the project. Project entitlements and all three parts seen uh that. We authorize staff to make minor amendments to the resolution. It's maybe needed for legal reasons prior to the council review.
Commissioner, or Chair Gerardo?
Yes.
Commissioner Harmon?
Hi.
Commissioner Kuhn?
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson?
Hi.
Commissioner Madden?
Hi.
Commissioner Lethen?
Hi.
Commissioner Paxton?
You can read comments. Comment.
All small and grand, I don't. He uh kind of exists. I love it. There it is. Let's see, um I have no. Comments from commission members? Let's see, I. Hey, uh we're this meeting is. Let's see, hey, uh, we're, this meeting is ensured and our next land commission meeting will be on May twenty first, twenty twenty four. Okay.